Good.
I will be down there.
Okay, we'll call the meeting to order to stand for the singing of O Canada.
(Singing) O Canada, our home and native land, true patriot of all, in all the sun's command. With glowing hearts we see thee marked the true north, strong and free. From far and wide, O Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God keep our land, glorious and free. O Canada, we stand on guard for thee. O Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Record of attendance, Lynda Yegud. Any declarations of conflict of interest? Approval of agenda, additions and deletions. So I have 11A, capital budget, 11B seafood and wine extravaganza presentation request. Counselor Dawes.
Thank you, your worship. Under 11C, I'd like to add planner's conference review. Thank you.
Planner's conference, 11C. Anything else? Okay, approval of agenda with the additions, please. Moved by Counselor Langel, seconded by deputy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Approval of minutes. Public hearing, May 14th, 2014. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Questions been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Minutes for the committee of the whole, May 28th, 2015. Moved by Counselor Lando, seconded by Counselor Mooney. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Town council, May 28th, 2015. Moved by Counselor Dennis. Seconded by Counselor Langel. Discussion, questions been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Business arising. Committee appointments. CAO.
Your worship, we have three applications that have been circulated confidentially to council. And we do have openings on a few of our committees and boards. And just for information, I'll let you know which ones those are. We have a vacancy on the Recreation Committee. We have a vacancy on the Heritage Committee. We have vacancies on the Taxi Advisory. We have vacancies on YASTA. And I believe we have a vacancy on Communities in Bloom. So what would be appropriate is if you wish to make a motion to appoint any of those applicants to the available spots, it would be appropriate to do so by motion.
Counselor Langel?
Yeah. Thank you, your worship. I'd like to make a motion that we accept the application of Carol McKinley as a member of the Communities in Bloom Committee. She was an excellent candidate previously, and I highly endorse her.
Moved by Counselor Langel, seconded by Counselor Dennis. Any discussion?
Questions.
Questions been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Any more at this time? Sorry, I'm just looking through my—
Just a question, your worship, if I may. In conversation to the CAO, did any of these applicants, I know that Carol McKinley did specifically request Communities in Bloom, but did the other three applicants? Michael, did Michael, for example, did they have a specific, a committee they had in mind? Maybe they—
Your worship, Michael did not specify a committee. I know that Janice was interested in YASTA.
Okay. So you move it.
Good. Counselor Dennis?
I'd like to make a motion that Janice Sonnier be added to YASTA.
Moved and seconded. Discussion? Did you have a—
I was going to make a motion—
Okay. Moved and seconded. Any more discussion?
Call the question, your worship.
Questions been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Counselor, can you, would you just turn that? Nope, that's okay. And maybe, I'm just wondering if we could advise Mr. Wilson, maybe of what's open there? Oh, sorry.
Thank you, your worship. I was going to, I was going to ask and suggest if we, any one of us, I would, I would be willing to speak with Mr. Wilson to see which of the committees that have vacancies that he would be interested in.
Okay.
And then report back.
Does that work? Yeah, that works. Okay. Good. Thank you. Blue Dot Resolution. Counselor Langel.
Thank you, your worship. At the last meeting, I, last meeting of council in May, I gave notice, a motion that I was going to ask council upon recommendation of the Communities in Bloom Committee to adopt the Blue Dot Resolution that was passed onto council. And the motion would read, excuse me, whereas the, that the town council, Yarmouth Town Council endorses the following resolution and authorize the mayor to sign this declaration. Oh, good God.
Is this attached?
I'm okay. There we go. Thank God to heaven. Yeah. Just to, just to go through it, the resolution has been circulated. I don't think I need to read it all because we could be here for a while. So my suggestion is if any of the council has any thought, I'd like to make a motion that we endorse this resolution. I do know at the last meeting that we suggested that solicitor should look at this. So maybe if he wanted to comment, if somebody wants to second it.
Do you want to? Okay. Moved and seconded. Do you want to speak to this? Because I have some questions, too.
Yes.
And you have some questions. Go ahead.
Thank you. Yes, I reviewed the resolution. I sent an email to Jeff yesterday. Certainly, the resolution is within the mandate of the town. It's clear and sets out what's expected in the future. It does make commitments that are binding on the town in the sense they set out considerations the town must consider in the future in any decisions. And if the town made a decision without considering what's set forth in the policy, there could be some potential liability for the town. So the, the motion is certainly fine. There's nothing, it's within the mandate of the town. It's a perfectly acceptable motion to be voted on. There's just, there's a potential, or creates a set of conditions for the town to consider that are not present in municipal government act or anywhere else. So that would, the town would have to be mindful, council would have to be mindful of that for all future decisions.
Good.
Just back to the solicitor. Now, in looking at this, a lot of this document, when the Communities in Bloom looked at this, was basically looking at our Integrated Sustainability Plan, which basically, I believe, I could be corrected, addresses most of this. We kind of piggybacked it onto that plan. When we look at the basic, what the premise is, that all people have the right to live in a healthy environment, including the right to breathe clean air, the right to drink clean water, the right to consume safe food, the right to access nature, the right to know about pollutants and contaminants released into the local environment, and the right to participate in decision making that will affect the environment. That's basically the, that's what the resolution calls for. And the other parts are simply saying that, you know, we are going to promote these rights and that we will, that we will, you know, work with our citizens on this. So that's, to me, a number of cities, St. John's, Newfoundland, just approved this, I believe, last week. They have done a similar resolution. In fact, theirs is a little bit more stringent than ours, are these the proposed ones for Communities in Bloom. So I think my question to the solicitor is, is what sort of litigation do you see coming out of this? Because when you look at this, we're doing this now. I guess I was referring to paragraphs three and four. Three says, "The town of Yarmouth shall apply the precautionary principle when threats of serious irreversible damage to human health or the environment exist. The town shall take cost-effective measures to prevent the degradation of the environment and protect the health of its citizens. The town will consider costs to human health and the environment. When the town of Yarmouth is evaluating reasonable foreseeable costs of proposed actions and alternatives, the town will consider costs to human health and the environment." So it's, they're perfectly fine statements, and surely they're part of any consideration I'm sure the council would make. But they are a set of principles that would bind the town in the future on, on, basically all decisions that might have an impact on that. So I suppose it's hard to predict what type of litigation may exist. It would be more, you know, if the town made a decision, that maybe they took the lowest cost method of doing something, and then where there was a, you know, maybe a higher cost, but was better for the environment or the health of the citizens. So it's not that the town could not do that. It would just have to ensure that it had, it considered these factors when it makes those decisions, so. So what you're saying, the solicitor, is that maybe for the benefit of this, just to take out paragraphs three and four, would basically, that would basically solve the issue because you're, all the others are—
Not for me.
Yeah. Because the first, the first clustering in one, so the declaration would read, all of one, which we're doing anyway. Number two, that we have the responsibility within its jurisdiction to respect, protect, fulfill, and promote these rights, which I know we do. And number five, we shall review the objectives, targets, timelines, and actions in its Integrated Community Sustainability Plan and evaluate progress towards fulfilling this declaration. So basically, that's, and we do that anyway. So to me, if we remove three and four, that would work. I'm just curious what the CAO feels, or what their counselors feel.
I disagree. The one that scares me is, is number two. Further, the town of Yarmouth has a responsibility within its jurisdiction to respect, protect, fulfill. So, so when I read these and understanding, I think this entire council is all about healthy outcomes and sustainability. That's not where we're going with this. That's, that's not the point. But, but when I read, when I read that we have a responsibility to fulfill these things, we have a responsibility to provide access to nature and, and, and all these other things, that's a, that's a big deal. And I'll be, it may be just me, but I can see, you know, cars driving down the street that have unhealthy emissions and, and people calling us and saying we have to do something about that. We can't control, we can't control everything. In theory, this is great, but, and I, and I believe, and I stand corrected, that this has been tabled at FCM. I'm pretty sure. Now, I stand corrected on that, but, but I think that was because they didn't understand the implications, both financially and legally, to the municipality. So I'll stop there, but somebody, Counselor Dawes, you're on.
Thank you, your worship. I read this as well, actually, I read it a few times, and I support it in principle. There are a number of areas that, that raise cautionary flags for me, though. If we were surrounded by tar sands, by clear-cut forests, or, or urban pollution, absolutely, definitely, yes, we would have many legs to stand on. But we, we have rights. Everyone has the right to live wherever they like. I also see our, I believe that our ICSP covers many of these points. I, I fear, I see the possibility of stepping into a potentially deep litigious hole in the future. Something that is acceptable and not recognized as a possible contaminant today. That could change in six months or six years from now. Like lead paint. Lead paint was, decades ago, lead paint was generally used everywhere, inside and outside houses. But today, it's, today, it's unhealthy. It's a contaminant. So I see areas where, where we could, where we could run into problems. I guess that I do, I do support this in theory. Our ICSP is already working, working, doing a very good job with it. Clean air, we already have it. We can't get any cleaner than, than living, living in an oceanside community. Clean water, we already have that. Consume safe food. Yeah. Everyone can, can grow their own if they like. We have community gardens. You can grow your own garden. But how far would, could, how far do we take the right to consume safe food? I could go and buy a bag of, bag of potatoes and find there's a nail or a razor blade in it. Am I going to, do I have any grounds, any right to go to the town and say, "You signed this, you presented us with this declaration"? No? All right. Because we know how litigiously happy people are these days. This can be, this, this can be interpreted many, many different ways. Right to access nature, we're surrounded by it, to the point where the calling, for the culling of deer was not that long ago. We're surrounded by nature. Everyone has access to it. They step out of the doors. To know about pollutants and contaminants released into the local environment, Mayor Mood brought that up. We would, that makes me think of every fossil fuel-dependent vehicle that goes up and down Main Street. A lot more pollutants come out of, out of exhaust pipes. And the right to participate in decision making that will affect the environment. Actually, as I recall, under David Suzuki's Foundation Blue Dot site, it says recognizing the right to fresh air, clean water, and healthy food, and a say in fish and decisions that affect the citizens. We have that already as well. We have open door policy here. We have public participation. Like I said, in theory, I support it. It's just too many, too many corners where I foresee we could get, we could get caught. And I have another point, but I will leave it at that.
Counselor Langel?
Thank you, your worship. And I think, to me, it's all how it's, how it's read and interpreted by the reader. And I just sent an email all to council I just received from Katie Perfect, who's the Blue Dot organizer in Halifax, that she's watching tonight. I love streaming. And her, her comment was, and I'm curious what Greg's opinion in this one, because this is, was our thought as well. She writes, "I'm listening in to the video, and I just wanted to send along a reminder that this is a declaration. Therefore, it is non-binding and aspirational." So is it, and this goes to the solicitor, because we're declaring this, is it, is there something there in the policy that I'm missing on that one? Curious what your thoughts are on that.
Well, I would think paragraphs three and four are, are more than just declarations. They're, they are a commitment. So I would see that differently. Two, two is not as clear. I mean, you're, the town has the responsibility to do certain things. I mean, certainly, the health of the citizens of the town is within its mandate and its responsibility as to what the town does about that is entirely different thing. But I, you know, I would disagree. I'd say for sure, three and four is a commitment, and two is—
Responsibility.
—is, is close to it.
See, two, to me, is even more of a commitment. You're, you're the lawyer, but it says, "The town of Yarmouth has a responsibility to fulfill these rights." That's how I'm reading it. So anything that goes wrong, we have the responsibility to make, to make sure this doesn't happen. That's nearly impossible, but—
Yes. Thank you, your worship. I'm reading it, and the three and four was more alarm, alarming to me than number two. Number two, as I read it, further, further, "The town of Yarmouth has a responsibility," and the town of Yarmouth has a lot of responsibilities for fire, water, sewer, policing, roads, streets, and pave, and all that stuff. That's our responsibility within its jurisdiction, and we do, within the town, to respect, protect, and fulfill, and promote these rights. And, and, and we do. I'm not, I'm not talking about the water and sewer and all the other stuff, but what they're talking here is that we have the jurisdiction to promote what we, what we are elected to do and fulfill, as in policing, fire, roads, streets, water, sewer. We have the responsibility in the jurisdiction as counselors to make sure that these things happen and work. I, I don't see anything wrong with two, to fulfill and promote these rights. Well, they're, they're talking about the overall declaration, the recognition of rights to live in a healthy environment. And we do that all the time. We do that every day. As counselors, mayor and counselors, we do that all the time. So I, I read into this. I don't, this, this doesn't alarm me a bit. And I'm glad that the, the solicitor is not so much alarmed, or he's not alarmed at all with number two. He's more with three and four, as I am. There is some problem with that, to me. But the other ones, I don't have a problem with.
Thank you, your worship. I think two, in number two, and I hear a concern, but there is a phrase there that's very significant, and that is "within its jurisdiction." Some of those things are not within our jurisdiction. The right to consume safe food has got nothing to do with the town council. You know, we, we don't police that. That's done by the food, food, Canadian Food Agency does that. The right to breathe, to drink clean water, well, we have a water utility which we take great pride in, and we check our water on a basis all the time. The breathing of clean air, obviously, we want that as much as everybody. The right to access nature, just tonight, we're going to be having a proposal again from Communities in Bloom in the Doug Malonson Park, and we've worked really hard to do that. The pollutants and contaminants released, that has to be done by the various hardware stores and agencies anyway. And the final one, we take great pride, your worship. You're opening the doors. That's, this is opening the doors. The right to participate in decision making that will affect the environment. I would like to propose that we delete three and four, and because that's where the solicitor has concern. And that, and I would propose it as an amendment, that we delete three and four, if there's a seconder, and then we'll, we'll go on, and then we'll go to the full declaration, if, if that's agreeable to, to council.
Counselor Mooney?
I, I'm willing to support the document as it stands. Counselor Langel put it very well when he went through all the points on number one and number two. I have no problems with that. But I think three and four are things that we all strive for, either when we go to EMOs, anything. I think almost anytime we make a decision around this table in any committee, we, we consider damage to health, and we consider damage to the environment. We do that almost on a daily basis on any committee that we sit on. I know with the CAO and all our department heads, they do take cost-effective measures to prevent things that happen to the environment, and things that happen to our, our health of our citizens. I think they take that into account when they make decisions, when they bring proposals to the table that are, that are costed out. I think they bring all those things to the table. When we go to number four, we talk about this, as the mayor knows, Counselor McCausick knows, we talk about human health and the environment, we go to EMO. We talk about sometimes, when they did the Integrated Community Sustainability Plan, we proposed actions and alternatives for, for costs, you know, in, in the health and environment. I have no problem with three and four. I can see where there might be a legal opinion that they might have a problem. That's something that we have to strive for as a community to enact, and hopefully, in the next, you know, by the time we're done around this table, that, that these are guidelines that we are going to live and abide by. So I have no problem with, with any of them, really. Thank you.
Having a conference back here. Can you speak anymore to it? I'm just, for, the whole, the whole FCM piece, and, and, not that we can't blaze the trail in Nova Scotia, but I don't know why, why no one else is picking up on it. Go ahead.
Well, I was just going to say, the CAO asked me about paragraph two there, "within its jurisdiction," and whether that refers to what the town has power over, or its authority over, or within the limits of the town. You know, you know, normally, the jurisdiction is the area, is, refers to the geographical area, but again, I'm not, I don't think number two really creates an obligation on the town. No responsibility within its jurisdiction to respect, promote, fulfill, and promote these rights. But I, I don't think that creates an obligation. Three and four, I think, definitely do create an obligation. Like I said, two is, it's a, you know, it's a gray area, but it, it's really, it would be, I would think it would be very hard pressed for, for that statement in number two to, to ground some liability or some obligations on behalf of the town, so.
So let me ask you this. This is way out there, but this is, this is where I'm going, because, because some people do. So the right to breathe clean air. So, so what happens if, if the neighbor starts up his car every day and it's got this smoke coming out of the, and, and we allow that? Does somebody come to us and say, "You said I have a right to breathe clean air," and that's just not happening? And let me say this, too. The wood, the wood heat, the wood smoke that affects a lot of people, is that, is that something? These are the, and, and I know this is just, everybody's saying it's just a general, but the minute people start picking this up and saying, "You promised," you know, "And you have to stop the wood heat because the neighbors are upset," and I understand it affects people because it's an environmental, it's an environmental issue. Like, where do you go with those things? Are those just not, and, and you can't tell me that people won't, because they will?
Well, you know, you're right. People will do what they can do. But I mean, to, to suggest that the town has, should ban, you know, wood burning stoves because of this statement, I think, to me, that's a stretch. You know, is anything possible? Well, anything's possible, but I would, I would think it would be a stretch that a court would somehow determine, well, because the town passed a resolution which it could, you know, unpass if it wanted to in the future. It's not, to, to say that, I, I, you know, I, I know what you're saying. I just don't see it as, as being a, you know, a concern in that regard.
Okay. You're the lawyer. You're the lawyer.
I can't guarantee you anything. And just as a sidebar, your worship, you know, we, we have gone on record where we did put in regulations. Counselor Dennis reminded me of the open pit burning, for example. It's a prime example where we had a complaint from a number of residents of people having the open fires because of the concern for smoke. And we did actually pass regulations, and bylaw was put in place for that. So I mean, we have got that commitment already, but I agree with the solicitor. I said, you know, we're, I don't think our intent is to start a wood burning police kind of thing happening. But reality, though, I mean, it may happen, since wood prices are going up almost to the point of oil anyway, so who knows?
But, but in all, in all honesty, to that point, that, that we write, you know, a policy that says, "No, no burning wood in your backyard because it's bothering the neighbors," right? It is summertime, but it's all winter when you have, it's, it's, there's just a whole lot of issues for me, but that's, and the fact that FCM has, has tabled it, too. But, okay. So we have an amendment. So we're going, would you, the amendment is to delete three and four. Okay? And we have a seconder. Counselor McCausick seconded that. So we're going to vote on the amendment first. Certainly. If you put your light on. Yep, go ahead.
Thank you, your worship. I was just, I just wanted to ask our CAO. He looks, he looks, he's looking very pensive. What were you thinking? looking very pensive. What were you thinking? Do you have anything to say to this?
Well, I get a little nervous when I see, when I see us making motions or passing resolutions that are bestowing rights to individuals, rights to people. You know, I think that's, I take that seriously, really seriously. Like, that's, to me, that's really something, and people can take that to heart, and maybe rally around it, and maybe use it against us, but I take a lot of comfort in the solicitor's advice, that there's not much of a chance that this could actually be successfully used against us. But, it could be something that will cause some discussion, and, you know, maybe second thought on some things in the future, which might not be altogether bad. If we're serious about it, then pass the resolution. The other part of the blue dot movement is asking, I believe it's asking the federal government to open the Constitution and enshrine these rights, and I think there's little or no chance of that, but I don't think that's the point. I think the point really is to have a national dialogue, a national political dialogue about the environment. I don't think the federal government and the provinces are going to open the Constitution to add these rights, given the potential liability when something does get into the Constitution. Just my opinion.
So, I keep reading everything that says it's aspirational and non-binding. Is that true, Mr. Solicitor? Well, really, because I'm reading a document that we're signing, and we're making all these promises, and then we're saying it's not binding. Go ahead. Are you on?
You're setting out principles that you're going to believe in, and that you're going to move forward, and I guess, keep at the forefront of decisions. It's, now, is that a good thing or a bad thing? It's, you know, it depends on your point of view. If you want to absolutely avoid any possibility of litigation, then you wouldn't regulate in any areas, because if you don't regulate it, well, you can't be held at fault. So, I mean, you know, that can't be the goal. I wouldn't suggest to the town to avoid, you know, litigation at all costs. Question is, you know, is it, you look at the purpose of this, what's the, you know, what's the purpose of this? The purpose of it is, I presume, to put it at the minds of council, so that when it comes forward, most likely through the Integrated, you know, Community Sustainability Plan, that you address these issues. You know, it just strikes me, just for someone to say, "Well, you passed a, you know, a resolution, so now, you know, I say I don't have clean air, so you have to fix it," kind of thing. I just, well, you can watch. People can say a lot of things in letters, and threaten things in emails, and all that, but that's, you know, you have to ignore that.
Has to go to court.
Right, and you know, you go to court. So, that's what I'm saying. Are people going to presume to read too much into it? Possibly, likely. Does it create any, you know, legal obligation on the town to act in an area that it would not otherwise act in? I would think that would be a...
So, when it says jurisdiction, is that MGA?
Well, again, I mean, maybe to make it clearer, "within its jurisdiction and mandate." So, it's clear that it's the town of Yarmouth, and the mandate are within its jurisdiction and authority.
The authority is better for you.
Yeah, and then that way, it's clear that it's within the powers of the town. Things that are within the power of the town, as Counselor Langel said, it's not within the power of the town to regulate, you know, safe food and things like that. That would make it, certainly make it clearer.
That feels better.
Yeah, and if you look at it again, right, and can people out in the streaming world get this? Have they got a copy of that? We're going to have a federal election here in October, and we're going to have a municipal election next year, and a provincial election in two years down the road, and anybody running for any political office, you're going to see a combination of all these things on this front page and any one of their, any one of their campaign platforms, right? And it's, everybody wants the right to breathe clean air. Everybody wants the right to drink clean water, right? They want to consume safe food. They want the right to access to nature, right? And Counselor Langel spoke to that with Doug Malonson Park, the Broadbrook Park, things that we've done in the town of Yarmouth. And we want people to be involved in decision-making, right? Everything on this front page is what we've campaigned for right around this table. It's nothing new. And you come back in 40 years from now, and we're all gone, Jim will still be on council for his fourth, he's going to have more comebacks than Cher, but this will be back. In 40 years, he'll still be saying the same thing, guaranteed. So, I don't have any problem with three and four. Like I said, I'll vote against the amendment, but I think this is something that we should strive towards.
Good. Okay. Any more discussion? Okay. Question is called on the amendment, to take three and four out. All those in favor? Opposed? Nay. Okay. Who's opposed? Oh, I don't care. Well, I don't care what we do. I'm not, okay? Your nay. Three. Okay, so, the amendment is accepted. Okay? Okay, so now, we're voting on the motion, and it doesn't... Yes. Oh, yes. And let's vote on that separately then, okay?
We agreed to include that, didn't we?
Did we agree? Is everybody okay with the further jurisdiction and authority?
Yeah.
And I'm assuming authority means MGA?
Right.
Okay, so the MGA doesn't say we have to do all these things. Okay? I just don't want the town to be on the line for. That's all I'm thinking. Okay, so we are voting on the motion with the change jurisdiction and authority, and number three and number four coming out. Okay? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Nay. Good enough. But motion passed. That was some good discussion. Doug Malonson Park. Counselor Langel.
Thank you, your worship. At the last council meeting, again, because the Communities in Bloom Committee had met the day before council, I also used this as a notice of motion, to give council a chance to look at the drawing that was circulated, and as well, to look at the motion. So, I'm now moving today the actual motion, that the Communities in Bloom Committee, I'm sorry, that the town of Yarmouth received the report from the subcommittee in Communities in Bloom, and that I'm moving that council accept the recommendations off the subcommittee for the new Doug Malonson Park, with the understanding that it will be referred to the Parks Department, and with the approval from the Milton Improvement Society, and I'll speak to that.
Okay, so that the town, you were changing this Communities in Bloom Committee?
Yeah, we, it should be that the town of Yarmouth is receiving the report from the subcommittee, and in the recommendation is that we're, that council is accepting the recommendations for the new Doug Malonson Park, with the understanding that it will be referred to the Parks Department, and it has the approval of the Milton Improvement Society, which we have. And if there's a seconder, I'll just speak on it for a second.
Counselor Mooney seconded that, I think?
Yeah, yeah. Just for council's information, this is a five-year dream. It's not an instantaneous project. If you recall, Communities in Bloom, and with council's very kind support, put in place the community asset donation program, and this is basically the goal of this park. It's going to be a memorial park, where people will be able to donate different features, plants, trees, in memory of loved ones. That's the whole intent. So, it's a phased-in park. It's nothing that's going to happen overnight, and we are hoping that it'll be done by our Parks Department, but will not cause any financial commitment to the town of any great amount. At this point, we're working with, the intent is to work with the contractor, work with the Milton Improvement Society, and it's going to be a park that we're kind of hope to be built, that will not require a lot of public money put in. It would be done by individuals.
Awesome.
Yeah, and the conversation with the Communities in Bloom and the Milton Improvement Society, they're actually the ones that came up with the thing, instead of trying to jam it in all at once, to do it over a two- or three-, four-year span, and less drain on our resources, more time to fundraise, use the community asset donation to as full as extent. So, they're fully on board with that, and they want to see that develop over the next two or three years, and let it, let the process go, and they were quite supportive through the whole thing, the Milton Improvement Society.
Good. Counselor Dawes?
Thank you, your worship. All right, so, I think I understand this now. This is an initiative from the Milton Improvement Society. Is that correct?
No.
No, the whole Milton, the whole Doug Malonson Park councillor came out of the Milton School, when the Milton School was torn down. That was town property. And the intention was that Milton Improvement Society has always been a very valued partner with Communities in Bloom. Where it was in their turf, we asked them to get involved with us, and that was in an issue with one of our parks, and ground supervisor Rodney Doucette has been meeting with them, along with several of our committee members jointly worked together on this. But the actual park...
Yes, I remember, I remember attending a very cautious meeting with the Milton Improvement Society, yes.
That was the one at the, that was the one at the church. Yeah, I was there as well, counsel, but things really progressed very nicely since that meeting. There was some misunderstanding, and if you remember at the time, there was a fair, there was a fair amount of tension as to what was going to happen. So, this was a beautiful compromise that has worked out between the groups, and as a result, the council, our council here, recommended to the Communities in Bloom, back to us, to work on the park concept. We, in turn, put a subcommittee together of our members with Milton Improvement, and then the whole design has come out as a result of that. So, it was a very cooperative community effort.
That was a beautiful answer to a very quick and short question.
It helped me understand you, though. Did you get your answer?
I'm not sure.
It's okay. It's okay. Don't turn on. Good. Okay, so, so you made the motion. Who seconded that? Counselor Mooney seconded it? Is there any more? Go ahead, counselor.
Thank you. Thank you, your worship. My next continuing question was going to be, okay, not of any great amount, with a lot of public money. How much, since the Communities in Bloom is co-author of this, so to speak, and this is a five-year plan. They're beautiful. They're absolutely beautiful, the pictures, the attachments, but what rough dollar figure are we looking at?
Sorry. Go ahead.
Bottom line, and again, the CAO may want to jump in here as well. We basically own the land, so we have to maintain the land anyway. We have to mow it. We have to keep it neat. We have to keep it clean. That's part of the thing we will be doing. So, we're looking at primary maintenance. We do have staff, so we're kind of hoping there may be some assistance when we get to the tree planting. The first phase is simply to lay out the park, i.e. the walkways, the design. That's step one to do, and that's something that we're kind of hoping can be done by the town staff as we proceed ahead. But that's down the road. That won't be happening, counselor, until next year. Now that council, hopefully tonight, will approve this, we can then sit down and actually put a financial plan in place for costing. But the intention, the whole intention of the park is it is owned by the town of Yarmouth. It is our park as such, and our parks and ground staff will be looking after it. But we're hoping that every facet of that park will be a donation, even the walkways, even the pebbles. I mean, people, I've had a number of people already approach me that are willing to donate to the town. So, our involvement will be more in the physical side. We're maybe putting trees in, but again, you've got to bear in mind, we have an excellent partnership with the Yarmouth Garden Club, and an excellent partnership with the Milton Improvements Society. So, we have a lot of hands to work on this project.
Thank you, your worship.
Good. Welcome. Okay. Any more discussion?
Questions.
Questions being called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Nova Scotia Garden Club, Counselor Langel?
Thank you, your worship. I'd like to make a motion that the town of Yarmouth send a letter of congratulations to Vivian Kennedy and the members of the Yarmouth Garden Club for their outstanding efforts in bringing the 2015 Annual Nova Scotia Garden Club's Annual General Meeting to Yarmouth last weekend.
Moved and seconded, I have to say. Wow, because we, you couldn't go anywhere in the community that there weren't people looking through the heritage district, and in businesses and restaurants. It was amazing, and everybody had positive things to say. So, we do do this best, and Vivian was, Vivian and her team were excellent. Discussion? Questions being called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. New business? HRM Smart City Program, CAO?
Okay, well, if you like irony as much as I do, there's a mistake in the name of that program. It isn't Smart City, it's Solar City. That's the ironic part, right? So, we talked about this a little bit at Communities in Bloom, sorry, Communities in Bloom, a committee of the whole. Hasn't been that long already? Anyway, HRM has run a very successful Solar City program, and they're now entering phase two, and I'd hope to have more information for you tonight to present about that. But essentially, I can tell you that the first phase of it, the city borrowed money through FCM, through the green municipal funds, and they turned around, they loaned that money. They got the legislation changed, so they were able to loan that money to residents to install solar panels, solar hot water panels, on their homes, and they were able to collect back that money with interest through the property tax process. So, the payback on the solar panels was typically about 10 years for the resident, and the life of the solar panels is about 25 years. So, it's a net benefit to the resident, creates a, I guess, a bit of an offset on their hot water heating costs, and does something really great for the environment. It was successful. It was a pilot. It required legislative changes, so it was, it was kind of on the edge, and they are now, they've evaluated, and they're now entering a second phase, which will include solar voltaic as well as solar hot air. Now, I did reach out to the city to seek some assistance, some guidance, some lessons learned, and perhaps be able to borrow some of their, some of their excellent public information about their program. Their coordinator has left his job with HRM, and is now employed in the District of Lunenburg, so I'm chasing him there for answers to my questions. But I have also touched base with his replacement, who is on day two of her job, and she is, she's willing to share, but she couldn't answer the question about whether their collateral, if we could plagiarize their collateral for our benefit, and to what extent HRM would support other municipalities undertaking a similar model to what they established. But I expect that that will all be very positive. Halifax or HRM tends to be a good partner within FCM and within AMA, and so I expect that they'll be quite willing to share their success. But one of the key questions is, is it scalable to small communities? Is it something that's really practical or possible to make successful in small communities? Maybe something we look at regionally. I know Digby Municipality is quite interested in it as well. So, I will have more information for you. What I intend to bring to you is a proposal to establish a program, if it makes sense to, and whether I think it makes sense to or not, I'll bring you the pros and the cons, the kind of the information that you'll need in order to make a decision whether you want to take a loan from the green municipal funds, and then establish the program. My understanding is that the program is self-sustaining within HRM, that the 1%, excuse me, they loan the money at 1% higher interest than what they borrow it, and that 1% that the residents pay in interest covers the administrative costs of the program. So, it is self-sustaining. If it is scalable, and we can do it, then I'd be pretty excited about what it could mean for our community.
Out of where? Out of where?
Where?
Where do we take the money?
Oh, sorry. FCM has a green municipal funds program. They were funded by the federal government to create this green municipal funds, and they do both loans and grants, primarily loans for projects such as this.
Wow. Good. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Jeff. I watched the video with interest, the two-minute-plus video.
I, I watched the video with interest, the two-minute-plus video. I can remember installing solar panels on a home that we lived on, just off of Parade Street back in 1986 to raise the, the temperature of the water entering our home from up to room temperature almost. I, and we had, I think there was a federal grant available at that time and was very, very happy with it. And you come up with a, a plan, I'll be the first to make a motion to support it.
I agree har- hardly with, with Jim. Jeff, what is your next step? Is it something you need a motion to refer this to staff or is that what we're looking at? Because definitely it's an excellent program. I, I know it's something, living in the Heritage District, that I, I know our planner is here. We really have to start looking at what we can do to heritage homes as well, because I know we're restricting them. But I think it's a, an incredible project because they have such beautiful rubs that would be perfect for, for, for panels such as this nature. So is, is that what you're looking for, a motion?
Mm-hmm. Okay.
How about we do this? How about we take the next two weeks and see what I can bring you to committee of the whole? And if, if I can't bring you much more than I have tonight, which is just words, then, then let's figure out maybe a subcommittee or something that, that we, that we put our heads together and make this happen. Ultimately, it will require a, a resolution to, to borrow money and then to establish the program. But first, we need to have the information and the key thing I'm looking for from HRM is the lessons learned. They've, they've obviously, if you look at their website on the Solar City, they've, they've got a lot of information there, including all of their staff reports to council. You know, it's, it's, it's a wealth of information. It's a matter of going through it and, and understanding, is this scalable to our community? And what mistakes, what mistakes did they make and what things did they encounter that they would do differently in Phase Two? So Julian, I can't remember the gentleman's last name, but he, he now is in Lunenburg. If I could track him down, I'm sure he'll be a wealth of information.
Anything else for CIO? Sewer connection bylaw. CIO?
Your worship, we received direction from council on this at a recent committee of the whole meeting. We had the engineer draft some amendments to the sewer connection bylaw. And there are two things that we're achieving in this bylaw. One is, is requiring backflow, how's he call them? Backwater valves that meet a CSA standard in sanitary sewer connections. And we're also stating in, in Part Eight that rainwater downspouts are not permitted and in Part Nine, sump pumps can't be directed into, into the sewer. So these are all things that are, that are good, good, best practice, I guess, in terms of sanitary sewer. The solicitor has reviewed the, the amendments as drafted and has sees no problems. So tonight, if you're comfortable with it, I can answer any questions and a motion for first reading would be, would be appropriate.
Good. Okay, so I'm looking for that motion for the first reading. Okay. Counselor Dawes? Counselor McCaughan?
Thank you, your worship. My question's to CIO. Jeff, on number, number three, brackets, payment of, payment of a permit fee in the amount of $500. Has that always been $500? And the $500, do they get any of that back? And what does that go for, the $500? What do they get for 500 bucks? Other than hooking up and paying a sewer bill? What do they get for the $500?
They get the privilege of connecting to the sewer for 500 bucks. Okay. And that's always been that way? At least for the last 11 years.
Last 11 years? Since you've come on stream? It went up?
No.
Okay. Just asking. Just checking. Just checking. Do you even got a good memory? Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Counselor Dawes?
Thank you, your worship. Unless there is any other further discussion or any other questions, I would make that motion to accept this bylaw for first reading.
Moved and seconded. Any more discussion? Questions being called? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Paving, patching 2015 season tender results. Boy, I hope they're high. I don't hope they're high, but I just know that, oh my dear, what a pile of patching. Go ahead, CIO.
Thank you, your worship. Tender for the 2015 construction season for paving and patching of various streets within the town of Yarmouth was advertised on the Town of Yarmouth's website and the Vanguard. One response was received with results summarized in the table provided by the town engineer. It is recommended that the tender be awarded to the only tenderer, Aberdeen Paving Limited. And it's recommended the tender be awarded, sorry, yeah, that's, we're repeating the line.
So I have a question.
Yes.
Unless I'm missing something, we're, we're just going on, on, on pricing, but we have no idea how much all of this is going to cost.
No, we, we do have an idea because we, we have a budget. Right. So the way we do this is that we work up to the limit of our budget.
Okay, good. Good. Thank you.
And occasionally beyond if necessary.
Yeah, well, that's what I, yeah, because we're, it's a mess. Counselor Dawes?
Thank you, your worship. I would make the motion to accept the tender for the 2015 construction season as presented and recommended by our town engineer, Dave Ernst.
Moved.
Thank you.
We got a second there?
Should we give the names of the companies?
Yep. For Aberdeen Paving Limited. We're going to add that. Linda, we're good? Okay. Yeah, well?
Second?
Yep, moved and seconded. Go ahead.
No, no, no. I got your question, that's all.
I second the motion.
Okay.
All right. Do I have to add, interject with the name of the, of the paving company, Aberdeen Paving?
We just did.
Before or after?
Yeah. We just added it.
You seconded?
Yep.
Yes, Aberdeen Paving. Thank you.
You're welcome. Counselor McCaughan?
You can, you can, we can move this and I just want to ask Jeff a question on paving.
Okay. Any further discussion on this?
Questions.
Questions being called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Counselor McCaughan?
Thank you, your worship. Question to the CIO. Jeff, the, the town of Yarmouth has purchased a new pa- patch, patching machine, paving machine, somewhat of a paving patching machine. I don't know the proper name of, of it. I know it's, it's big and goes around and it does a lot of patching. Now, is that going to, going to be going throughout the summer or the fall this year? Patching and, and patching the streets in the town of Yarmouth? Is there a schedule, do you know, or they just go when, when they?
Well, they, they have that job and, and everything else that they do.
Yeah.
And we don't have a lot of men. And so it's, it's juggling the, the demands that are placed upon them. But it has been out a fair amount this spring. People, I know they noticed it was missing for a few days because-
Yeah, no, they have, yeah.
It required burner, burner service. It has a burner that required servicing and had pre-soated up, so.
I know they've been doing a great job. That's why I'm asking.
It's back, it's back in action.
Good.
It, it is only capable, though it's a fairly small machine, it's only capable of, of generating or preparing enough asphalt to do roughly a 10 by 10 area in a batch. So.
So is that machine we have now, is it sufficient enough, you think, or?
Well, it's, it's the first one we've had.
Okay.
So everything it's done this year is more than we've ever had before.
The town of Yarmouth years ago used to have its own paving company.
Years ago, you're right. You're right. You're right. So it's, it's the biggest we've had in a long time.
Yeah.
And, you know, we'll, we'll run it this year, we'll evaluate it. And the great thing about it is, is, is that it's, it's ours.
Yeah.
We're in charge of when it operates. And the intention, when, when the idea was first brought forward was not so much in this season when we, when we contract out the patchy, but in the off-season, when we end up using coal patch and doing temporary patching.
Right.
We'd be able to bring this machine out, create a batch of, of asphalt and do a permanent patch versus temporary.
I think the boys got it down pat because I see a, a lot of it around. It, it looks good and there were some really big craters around, especially on Water Street.
Yeah. I'll just, I'll just throw a little signal out that, that one of the things, one of the supervisors mentioned to me is that it would be great to have their own roller.
Yeah.
So it's very possible we'll see that come up as an equipment request.
Good, good.
What was that? A roller?
Roller.
A roller?
Yeah.
Okay. I know, yeah.
Yeah. Anyway, Jeff, I, I just wanted to ask that and hopefully the boys, I know that they have, they're always busy, but it's, it's, it's great to see them when they're out. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor?
Jeff, just maybe a teasing comment. We sell our service to the municipality of District of Yarmouth and/or Clare in this area.
I just think that was a tease.
Ah, okay. Good, Counselor?
I know this is minutia, but I'm just dying of curiosity. What are we using for a roller now? Do we, and I'm just, I'm going with this, have we ever thought about like rental roller or leasing a roller?
Yeah, I don't know if the renting, renting one, I don't know. I'm just going to be honest.
It's just a thought.
You just mentioned to me that we might need to buy a roller or something.
Okay, good.
The, the other, the other thing is they have to, I, I don't know anything about paving and patching, but, but somebody said they started on Parade Street and it just didn't look like a good job. But they have to go back twice, like it's so deep, they have to do it in layers, right?
Exactly.
Exactly. So, so it's not that it's, it's not done well, it's that it's just not finished yet. So, yeah. Go ahead.
Yeah, the one you're referring to on Parade Street is one that the, the contractor does, right? So that, that cut and the first lift, that is, that is from the larger contractor, that one. And they always do it in two lifts because they, they get the first one in, you know, they compact the earth, they put the first level in and it settles a bit and they put the finish, the finish level on a week or two later.
Exactly. Okay. Good. All right. So the motion's on the floor for the season. Questions being called? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary?
We passed that motion. We said follow-up questions.
We did follow-up. Oh, that's right.
We did go through all of them.
We made, we made the motion, we made the motion for, Linda? We did the patching and paving and we passed that. Now we're to the sidewalk curb program and that's Counselor Dennis. Go ahead.
I moved that the contract for the sidewalk and curbing program for 2015 season be awarded to Dexter Construction Limited.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Questions.
Questions being called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. We have thank you letter for Resaltscapes. Counselor Dennis?
Make a motion that correspondence be sent to Phil LeBlanc of IMO Foods, thanking him for his continued support in donating kippers for Resaltscapes.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Questions.
Questions being called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Sidewalk off-ramps. Counselor Dennis?
I just got to load that up.
Want this, want this copy?
Oh, it's coming. I got it. That staff be directed to look at the sidewalk off-ramps on the corner of Jenkins and Main Street to see if something can be done to lower the incline for people crossing the street using walkers and wheelchairs to be able to cross safely.
Moved and seconded. Go ahead.
During the winter, you see many people falling there because of the steep incline and plus the sidewalk's kind of slanted. So probably about two weeks ago, there was a lady trying to get across the street with her walker and she was like really forward. It's amazing that she didn't fall. If there hadn't have been traffic, I would have ran across the street and helped her, but it's very hard for someone with a walker. And I've seen people with wheelchairs too. It's really hard for them. It's, it's very sloped. It's like a high slope. So if maybe they could make that a little more gradual slope to help. But anyway, I just think that maybe staff could look at that. Thank you.
Did you want to speak to that? No, we're good. Okay. Moved and seconded. Any more discussion?
Questions.
Questions being called by everybody? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Jody Shelley Goff for Health Tournament, re mayor's fund. The, who's that for? Oh, sorry. I thought that was Phil's. Go ahead, Counselor McCaughan.
Thank you, your worship. I got a question for, for the CIO. I already know the answer. We're going to ask them again anyway. Jeff, when we were doing our budget this year, we had to make some cuts. And we, you know, because we just, we had to make the, the cuts to make a balanced budget. So we cut a lot of things, reduced a lot of things. One of the things we did cut was the staff Christmas party. Am I right or wrong by saying that?
I don't remember. No. Yes, we did.
That ain't what you said this morning?
Yes, we did.
Okay, so we, we cut that. Also, Jeff, the other question I have is the hospital foundation. I think last year, we made a, we passed a motion that we would give funding a total of $60,000 for, over a two-year period. Did we start this year? This year, we started at the 30. So we are, we are supporting the hospital foundation already and again, next year for the tune of $30,000. So I don't know where anybody's going to go with the, the letter that was sent here about anybody going to the golf tournament, but I, if anybody, I, I wouldn't like to see the town buy, spend $1,200 to buy a permit to go or whatever to go play golf. If people want to go, counselors or employees, they should pay their own way to go because if, if we're going to cut Christmas parties and cut everything else, it would, I don't think it would look very good to send, to send any, any of us or whoever to the Christmas party. I mean, to the Christmas party, to, to the, to the, to the golf tournament. So anyway.
No, there's, there's no motion on the floor. There's just a, thank you, Counselor. There's, it just says Jody Shelley Goff for Health Tournament. All right, we have the letter.
To make a, to make a motion, we put a team in the Jody Shelley Golf Tournament. If there's a second there, I'll speak to the motion. Counselor McCaughan was against it last year and is against it the year before and he And he was against spending the money to give it to the hospital foundation for the equipment for the medication management system phase one, the medication management system phase two, and the CT scanner. You, you spoke against the motion. You voted against the budget that double dire honor, or double dire recruitment efforts for doctors a few years ago. Anyways, your worship, this tournament has raised over $325,000 the last 11 years. From MRI, infant incubator, renal dialysis, cancer center, wellness center, ANA analyzer, two laparoscopic suites, a portable ultrasound, a medication management system phase one, medication management system phase two, CT scanner, and we're going for 16 heart monitor defibrillators this year, and other infection control units, fetal monitors and lab equipment. We want to keep this center a regional center. Jody Shelley takes money out of his own pocket and he brings a couple of his NHL hockey playing friends, and he brings them down here to Yarmouth every year. If we didn't raise this $325,000 through this golf tournament, guess what they'd be doing? Instead of that $30,000 donation over, or $60,000 over three years, it could, well, I think Greg said three, and he's the chair of the board. It could have been 40 or 45,000 for a $1,200 investment to get almost $40,000 back. I think it's a good investment in this community. Not only shows that the town of Yarmouth is interested, it shows that the town of Yarmouth appreciates what Jody Shelley's done. I was gonna bring his hockey card, even though Jody Shelley was born in Edmonton, Alberta. You asked Jody Shelley where his hometown is, it's in Yarmouth, Nova Scotia. And he's proud to say it. He says it every time he's on TV that he's from Yarmouth, Nova Scotia. You can vote against the motion, but I think it's money well spent. People are coming from away, people are coming from Halifax, people are coming from around the province of Atlantic Canada come play in this golf tournament. So, you can vote against it.
That's your prerogative.
What is it, 1,200?
1,200.
Deputy? Sorry councillor McIsaac, I didn't even say.
Thank you, thank you, your worship. Well, thank you for the history lesson councillor Mooney. I think some of your facts, I think you better check them. But anyway, nevertheless, there's nothing stopping anybody sitting around this table from putting up their own monies. I'm saying it shouldn't be on the taxpayers' dime. We've cut, we've cut our budgets, we've cut parties. So, this is one party you don't mind that the town will, you think should pay $1,200 for whoever who wants to go. You're, you're for that. And you're right, I, I did vote in the last three times to not, for anybody, that's a town not to pay for councillors or anything to go, along with suppers and different things like that. I vote no for that also. But for the $60,000, you're totally wrong. I think if you check the motions that were made and the minutes who voted for it, I did not vote against it, I voted for it for the two-year period, $30,000 a year for over the next two years. And all the other stuff that you just said, that's fine. But i- if you're gonna put that out, I'd like for you to send me a, I'd like for you to give a copy of that to Jeff. And Jeff, I'd like for you to look up those motions over the last two or three years to see whether I voted yes or, yea or nay on those motions. Because you just can't make accusations like that, really. Unless, unless you got those motions right at hand, you could show me that. You, you really should not, you ought not to do that, because that's, that's not fair for me or anybody else, any other councillor. I wouldn't do that to you or anybody else. But, but, but if, if.
Let's go, let's go.
Well, it's, it's okay. Well, that's okay.
Let's go.
That's okay. Well, look, I, I'm not here to argue and fight with you. Not here to argue and fight, but anyway, if, if you can find those motions, Jeff, I'd appreciate it.
Okay. Let's go through the chair, deputy mayor, and then, then you.
With respect to councillor Danny's concerns, there's nobody any more than, than myself that's equally concerned about maintaining budget. With regard to Phil's motion, we made a motion earlier this year, maybe last month, I can't remember, to take the money out of our surplus. So, if, if we have to do that now, should that not be included in the budget that, in the motion that Phil is making? And, and I, at this point, would be supportive, as tough as it is around the table, I would be in, in support of the motion. What about the municipality of the District of Yarmouth and Argyle? Do they get a similar request? And do they, do they participate, Phil, as her, as you know? I, I don't know.
They would, I, you know?
I don't know.
I'm sure everybody would get invitations. Did you want to answer that question? Did you have a question with regard to surplus? Go ahead, then.
I just had a question about, we struggled with the location of money on a recent request. And we, and we agreed to take it out of surplus. Is that easier for you to do it this time, if the motion passes, Jeff?
Worship, to save all the arguments, I'll withdraw my motion. If that's all right with the second there.
Who is the second there?
Councillor MacLeod.
Deputy, you good with, with the withdrawal? Okay.
Your worship, if I may, not to muddy the waters, but, you know, the, this is something we have supported. But we also had long heard discussions here about requests such as this, that maybe consideration should be given for this to do under grants to organizations and put it in that group. Because we know it's happening every year, and it has been a regular year occurrence. And it, it's something that really we should look at as a consideration. I know it's something we can't scale, it's something we would have to pay the full amount if we decide to do it. But I would be much more comfortable to see it under the grants to organizations, you know, because it is very deserving, and there's no question of that. But, you know, so just as a point, your worship, so maybe that to be, to councillor Mooney, maybe because he has brought this up in the past, or councillor, deputy mayor MacLeod, if we can somehow put in our memory bank to put that as a line into the grants to organizations, and I think that would.
We just need a motion for that.
Okay, I'm gonna make that motion that the Jody Shelley tournament for future years be referred to the grants to organizations for consideration as a line item. I don't know if that works okay councillor Mooney, but at least it's there.
Second that?
Second that.
But I do have a question.
Go ahead.
A question to clarify. Would that then become its own individual line item, or is that part?
It, it would be, I would suggest it's gonna be in the ma, in the big list with everything else.
It would be its own, it would have its own line.
Yes, and then, then if we don't come up with 100 per, go ahead, you can answer that.
Mr. CAO will answer that question.
So, because, because the councillor's right, it's, it's an all or nothing proposition. Either pay the entry fee or you don't. Perhaps we add it in the grant spreadsheet as a yes or no. So, you still have the choice, right? You still, as councillors, have the choice to make that decision. But it isn't, you know, on a scale of zero to 11 or 1,200, whatever the fee is, it's, it's yes or no.
Okay. No, no, that doesn't work for me, because, no, I'll just, I'll just say why, because you're gonna, you can correct me on this. Because if, if even one councillor says no, right, I don't think this is a majority thing. I think this is a, it's sort of like you, oh, okay, okay, that's, okay. All right, councillor.
My step, oh, pardon me.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor. Did somebody second that?
You made the motion, seconded, and you have a question.
Okay, question's been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Reports, council advisory committees, committee of the whole, deputy mayor. Go ahead.
Thank you, your worship. I'm number one, and there's only 21 tonight, so it's not too bad. I move that the town of Yarmouth participate in the 2017 legacy project with the contribution to be deferred to the 2016, 2017 budget.
That's moved. Moved and seconded. Question's been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried, deputy?
I move that the town of Yarmouth proceed with the use of electronic voting for the 2016 municipal election.
Moved and seconded, so this is, this is total, right, that's what's understood, total electronic. Moved and seconded, discussion? Oh, sorry.
Your worship, I was absent for that committee of the whole, so just begging my indulgence, and I missed the discussion. The intent is we're gonna operate still a ballot here, this will still have an electronic ballot, will be happening here at this facility, that's, okay, fine. Thank you.
The, the only change that I would make, that based on our discussion last year, our discussion last meeting, and our experience last election, is that I wouldn't bother having a telephone poll here. We did have both computer and telephone available, but we certainly would have computer available with assistance from the return officer.
Good.
Question.
Thank you, your worship. I think the CAO just answered half my question. Would you repeat that, please? The part about the telephone, I didn't, I couldn't hear it all.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
So, the two methods of voting would be as they were last time. You could vote by either online computer.
Or telephone.
Or you could vote by telephone, pressing your, your buttons for the different selections. Last time, we ran a, an advanced poll and a poll on polling day, election day, in this building during regular office hours for the advanced poll, and then all, all day for election day. We offered, at that poll, we offered both a computer that people could use, and we offered a telephone. Nobody used the telephone, and it seemed kind of silly. We did went to a bit of work to make sure there was a telephone and all that, but since nobody used it, our return officer had suggested that it probably wasn't necessary. And so, we would learn from that for the next time and just not have a telephone at the, at the poll. That being said, if somebody showed up and, and wanted the returning officer's assistance and wanted to use the telephone, voting can be done from any telephone, so we can make arrangements to have them use an office somewhere within the building in privacy.
Thank you. And my, and, and my last question to, to number two is, will the, will the mobile electronic voting still be made available to all the seniors residences?
CAO?
So, last time around, we, we did an advanced mobile poll in all of the seniors residences, and we also did an advanced mobile poll for Yakro. And both of those were, were successful, and, and a returning officer felt they were, they were beneficial, so we would repeat that process again.
Thank you.
Good. Question's been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried, deputy?
I move that staff be directed to review the capital budget and form a list of items regarding the grant from the Canada 150 infrastructure program.
Moved and seconded, discussion? Question's been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
I move that correspondence be sent to rendezvous 2017, thanking them for their interest, but advising that we are not interested in participating at this time. Second.
Moved and seconded.
Questions?
Discussion, question's been called. Did you have a question? You look like you have a question.
Pam, she wasn't here last time.
Yeah.
Yes, I, I, I and councillor Langel were, were absent at the last, at the last meeting. So, I know, I know I have to vote on it, but whether I vote or not, it's still going to, I'm not familiar with it, but yet I also do not want to take up a lot of council, council's time.
Yep, go ahead, CAO.
So, this is a tall ships initiative. It's, it's headed up by the city of Quebec. They, they've invited 37 ports to participate in a meeting in Quebec City to talk about organizing it. What I talked to council about at, at the last meeting was that these things typically are a little sketchy, very likely going to be in Halifax.
Yes.
And, and, you know, we'll probably, if we participated, we might get one or two or three ships, or we may get none. And it'd be awfully hard to, to make it much of a draw if the big show is, is three hours down the road, and maybe another small show in Shelburne, and maybe another small show, you know, somewhere else along the shore.
It's happened before.
Yes, it has happened before. It's, so, so anyway, the recommendation from committee of the whole was to, to not participate.
All right, thank you very much. Is there, is there a possibility that if we did say yes, we'll, we'll, we'd like to take part? And if they do not, if, if the tall ships do not come down to visit Yarmouth, is there, is there possibility that we would have our money refunded?
Sorry?
No.
So, there were, there were no financial details provided within the letter of invitation. The letter was just inviting the mayor to participate in a meeting to begin to plan this in Quebec City this month. And, you know, there are no, no clear details in terms of costs or anything.
That's too bad. That is a question that I would, that I would like to, that I would like clarification on.
You would incur costs even if, you know, for whatever, I mean, the captains of the vessels have the ultimate say where they go.
Yes.
They can schedule wherever they want, but if the captain deems the weather conditions are not conducive, or for whatever reason, they're not gonna come ashore, they're not coming in. So, you might go, conceivably, go through the, go through the, the steps and the expense necessary for the security. Because these are ships sailing internationally, you have to set up at the port properly, as we've seen in the past. You could go to a lot of expense and end up with little or nothing to, to show. And of course, the marketing expense that you'd have to go to, to advise people that, that the show was coming. So, it's, it's a bit of a risky, risky deal. There's a lot more certain endeavors that you could get involved in. And, and say that's, so the recommendation was not to participate.
All right. I'm, I'm in, I'm in favor of that, but I thank you very much for, for you taking the time. I also thank the rest of my colleagues around the table for their indulgence, for, for your explanation. Because you have answered a lot of questions that people have been asking out, out in town for many years when it comes to the ships and not showing up. Thank you.
Councillor Langel?
And just to maybe help a little bit, we went through this, and CAO can remind me, in 2011, when we were approached by a similar activity at that time. And the way it was structured is that it was a per ship rental fee. So, each captain would charge us so much per, for their vessel to commit. I think, Jim, you may remember that as well. And it was quite a price tag. Those, some of the smaller ones were like three, help me out, Jim, I think three to 5,000 a pop. And the big ones were astronomical, you're looking at 22, 25,000 dollars apiece. So, we, we, it's just, we're a small community. To actually put on a good show, you'd have to pour in about $100,000 to make it worthwhile. And, and I think I commend my colleagues for the recommendation. I definitely will support we not get involved with that. There's bigger bang for the buck that we can do with our.
There is, you, you know the other piece, and the CAO mentioned it. I, I get a lot of notes from, from different people and phone calls, why, why don't we know when these little mini cruises are coming in? And, and the bottom line is exactly what he said, because you don't know until the 11,000 that they're coming in. Because of weather, or timing, or anything, so you get everybody, you put money into, you know, trying to draw people down there, and they just don't come in. And it is the captain's call, and, and of course, we respect that. But, anyway, we've had them last week and this week, and that's, that's good. So, so the motion's on the floor.
Question.
Question's been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried, deputy?
I move that staff be directed to investigate the possibility of setting up a policy regarding permitting vendors slash seasonal retail users to establish on town-owned property.
Moved and seconded, discussion?
Questions?
Question's been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
I move that staff be directed to investigate project applications through Nova Scotia Moves, and if approved, follow through with the projects.
Moved and seconded, discussion? Question's been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good stuff.
Contrary? Just a second there.
Sorry about that.
Motion carried, and CAO is going to speak to that.
Thank you, your worship. So, we've done some investigating, and I, if you don't mind me jumping in on, on that motion. So, the motion we've, we've already acted on, it was to investigate two projects with Nova Scotia, with Nova Scotia Moves, or I guess Connect Two is the new name for the program. The two, the two ideas that we had, one was to, to create a, put in place the infrastructure to make a safe pedestrian and cyclist crossing across Stars Road at the end of, of the Maude Lewis Trail. And the other project idea was to extend the Maude Lewis Trail south from Parade Street over as far as Forest Street. We, we have taken those, both of those ideas forward, and what they've asked is that we, we submit two different applications, that we not put them together, but we put those two things as separate applications. They would look forward to them. And what it would require would be a resolution from council to, to, in support of, of both of those projects. And perhaps those could be done as separate resolutions, so that we can send them in separately.
So, you, you want us to approve of number, number six tonight, right now, and then reaffirm with two more motions, one at a time, one for each project?
Right.
You can do it as part of number six, do you think, or do you want to do it in, under additional items?
Well, you, you just did number six, I believe. You just approved.
We haven't, haven't passed it.
You voted on it, right?
Yeah, we did. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Good. We're good.
Okay.
Okay.
So, a motion to, to approve, to, to apply and to support, come up with the words. A motion to support the project application for the infrastructure to extend Maude Lewis Trail across Stars Road, so.
So moved.
Moved and seconded, discussion? Question's been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
And the second would be to, to, to support the project application to extend Maude Lewis Trail south from Parade Street to Forest Street.
So moved.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Question's been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. That's excellent. No, listen, that's excellent.
Jeff, that's great, because you've done some work since our last committee meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, thank you to Dave and you. Go ahead, deputy.
I, I move that staff, I move that $5,000 be taken from surplus to match the Heritage Canada funding for fireworks.
Moved and seconded, discussion? Question's been called, all those in favor? Contrary? Motion carried.
I move that the town of Yarmouth participate with the HRM in the procurement process for electronic voting for the 2016 election.
Moved and seconded, councillor Langel?
Just want to clarify again, I wasn't at the meeting. It's at the planning meeting in Halifax, which is excellent. The procurement. The procurement, pro, that, the wording there, and just to see clarification, we're not going to be committed to this, HRM did have some issues in the last election with its, when there were some things that were happening there that was kind of, and so we still will have the, the right or the ability to tender out if we wish for another server.
CAO.
So, so what HRM has offered, all the municipalities that are, that want to take part, is they're going to do an RFP, they're going to establish a, a group that will evaluate. They've been doing electronic voting as long or longer than anybody else in the province, so they, they will do a procurement process. Everybody else can piggyback on it and, and purchase based on their recommendation, or you, you do maintain your, your authority to, to not accept their recommendation, to go a different way, to then run your own process, if you like. That, that completely is, is, remains the, the authority of council.
Good. Any more questions? Questions been called, all those in favor.
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried. Sorry.
Worship, I'll make a motion that Deputy Mayor McLeod be appointed to be the representative to sit on the committee for the 2017 Legacy Project.
Seconded. Yes, very. Moved and seconded, any, any discussion except from deputy mayor, you can't say no now. Questions been called, all those in favor.
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried, thank you councillor. Go ahead, deputy.
The last item is I move that five thousand dollars be budgeted for fireworks in next year's budget.
Seconded. Moved and seconded, discussion. Questions been called, all those in favor. Aye, contrary, motion carried. Citizen advisory, planning advisory, deputy.
So, I have with, with me in the audience tonight Caroline King, our, our planning officer, so there's several items on that item, on that, my item here, so I move to proceed to a public hearing in order to consider, and if deemed advisable, amend the land use bylaw to rezone Seventeen Ellis Road from low-density residential to high-density residential, as outlined in Caroline's report.
Seconded. Moved and seconded, discussion. Questions been called, all those in favor.
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried.
Thank you. I move to proceed to a public hearing in order to consider, and if deemed advisable, amend an existing development agreement at Eighty Main Street to move the fence to, described in Schedule B site plan, to the southern property line, as outlined in Caroline's report.
Seconded. Moved and seconded, discussion. Questions been called, all those in favor. Aye. Contrary, motion carried.
Number three, I move to refuse to amend the MPS and the LUB to establish real estate offices as a use, and to permit in the general commercial Main Street zone, as outlined in Caroline's report.
So moved. Seconded. Seconded, discussion. Questions.
What, what was it, to the members of the PAC, and Deputy Mayor's the chair, what was the discussion at the Planning Advisory Committee on this, deputy?
I'll just say one sentence, and then if Jeff or Caroline want to respond. Phil, I think that if we had opened the door to allowing the, that real estate office to remain where it is, then the downtown would become half as busy as it is today. And that's, and we worked really hard in nineteen eighty-eight, and you were part of the team then, in which we allowed or asked, confirmed through MPS that offices would remain in the downtown CBD, unless we can find something that's equal or better, then I think we're going to keep it the same.
Good. Oh, I thought he had another leg. Okay. Any more discussion? Questions been called, all those in favor.
Aye.
Contrary, oh, sorry, wow.
Just a question to that, now that it's passed, seeing that it was going to be passed, what happens next? I'm kind of curious. We, we have a business that is in place, it's existing, so maybe this is a question to the solicitor, is this an enforceable thing, or maybe something we have to do in camera, I don't know, I'm just kind of curious about the welfare of the business that's there now. I hate to see them move out of town, put it that way.
No, well, the town, town has a policy, and they've been, I believe they were sent a thirty-day letter, do you know that, for a fact, Jeff, or whether to cease?
Yeah, so, so I believe how this would have started was with a notice, a thirty-day notice that they were in violation, then they applied to amend. So, our policy is, is that once we have an application to amend the bylaw, we, we put a stay on any, on any further enforcement until that application has run its full course. Given that this has been, has been confirmed to refuse tonight, that is the end of the process. And so, even if they try, I mean, it might, it's possible they could try to amend the bylaw, again, in a different way, but our policy is, is that, is that that won't put a stay on the enforcement. So, they're in violation of the land use bylaw, the provision existed before the business did, and, and so it is an enforceable, enforceable offense. Greg, give us that.
Did you want to speak, Caroline?
Yeah, I just, I just, I agree with everything that was said, I just want to clarify that we haven't actually sent out the letter advising them that they are conflicting with our land use bylaw. The ladies who own Modern Realty came into our office when they made, made their move to ask about signage, and that's when we informed them that they were not allowed to be where they had relocated. And that time, they chose to put in an application to amend the municipal planning strategy and land use bylaw, so we haven't actually sent out that letter, so it, once this has been refused, that'll be our next step, and then they'll have thirty days from that point.
Good. Okay. So, the motion's on the floor, any more discussion?
We already, it's, it's.
We did?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, yeah, I get it. After, after, when we discuss afterwards, it gets confusing. Okay, deputy?
From the PAC meeting of June the second, number one is to proceed to a public hearing in order to consider, and if deemed advisable, amend the MPS and the LUB to permit development agreements for multi-unit dwellings, expansions of existing apartments, and group dwellings to be considered on local streets, as outlined in Caroline's report.
Seconded. Moved and seconded, discussion. This is just for public hearing. Questions been called, all those in favor.
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried.
The last item for me.
Oh, I'm sorry, I just didn't. Go ahead.
Yeah, I just had a question here, too, and this may be more to Caroline, just looking at this quickly, and I know we're in the application, how would this affect places like the Heritage District, for example? Will the Heritage, does the Heritage regulations in the Heritage District, or should we look at another historic district that we're kind of playing with? Will, does the, our Heritage bylaw supersede this one, or does this one supersede the Heritage bylaw?
If, if there was a property within the Heritage District that we were to consider a development agreement for, they would still have to comply with the Heritage requirements as those properties are registered.
Sure.
Yeah, it's, it's a good question, because I, yeah, the ability to put that, any building in the middle of anything that doesn't match is a, is a big deal. Yeah, okay, so, so the motion's on the floor?
It's, as we've moved and passed.
Moved and passed, go ahead.
So, the second and last item from the, June the second is I move to proceed to a public hearing in order to consider, and if deemed advisable, amend the MPS and the LUB to permit seasonal retail uses in all zones, with the exception of residential and environmentally sensitive areas, and to concurrently amend the LUB to rezone Forty-three Water Street from low-density residential to waterfront industrial M2, as outlined. Yeah, thanks, Phil.
Motion seconded. Questions been called, all those in favor.
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried. Did we, got quiet. Okay. Thank you, deputy. What's that? Sorry, I, go ahead.
Your worship, on this one here, I think I might be in conflict, so I'm going to excuse, accuse myself from the, from the table on this one.
Okay. Can we just do that one? Yeah, we already passed it, yeah, we passed it. That's why I said it got awful quiet, I, I looked at you and, and you didn't vote, so.
He did not vote.
I didn't vote on it, no.
Okay. Good, okay. I'll just do the mayor's report, it's short, it should be really long, but, yes, certainly.
Just on the occupational health and safety report, with this, it's not in the report, but just a concern of citizen, when we have our little paper operating around, do we have flagmen?
Go ahead, CAO.
We, we, I'll say this, it's a regular routine practice that we have flagmen when we're doing work in the street. We contract that work out, we don't use our own guys typically. I haven't seen it in operation out on the street, so I can't say that I've actually seen it, but I can confirm that for you if, if you'd like.
I think it should be.
Okay, thank you.
Good, okay. Mayor's report for, for June 2015, this week, where are we? We good?
He's discussing, he's in conflict.
No, he's not in conflict, but he doesn't, he doesn't often, no, he does, he often leaves when the mayor's report's being read, and that's.
He's a version.
He told me he had to leave. I don't take that personally. This week, a question that is often posed to me was asked by a provincial reporter visiting our fine town. He asked if Yarmouth has turned the proverbial corner, and, and he was blunt about it. I didn't hesitate, because I believe we have. While there's lots more to be done, and always will, and, and much hinders on future decisions that will be made by this council, as well as provincial and federal levels of government, there's no doubt that change is happening and more is on the way. This is absolutely not the time to slow down, but to up the ante, continue to push forward towards the Yarmouth we all know exists under all that we've been through. This week and last saw not one, but two cruise ferries in our harbor. The Nova Star continues to bring visitors across with better numbers than last year, and we were fortunate to have the Saint Laurent visit us, bringing with her close to a hundred and twenty visitors on each trip. While they had only a few hours on shore, they spent their time visiting local shops, eating in our restaurants, exploring our Heritage District, and talking with locals. Many have said how much they enjoyed their time, and they will return. While this may seem such, small to some, it's such things that allows businesses to hire extra people, and ultimately allows them to keep their doors open. It's all important, simple economics, and it's exactly what we need. So, I thank this community for, for being so welcoming, it does matter. Both the Tourism Association of Nova Scotia and the Nova Scotia Garden Association held their conferences here with rave reviews. Again, hundreds of visitors in our town exploring and realizing just how much we have to offer, and many with plans to return. Changes and additions in the business world continue to happen. We welcome Todd and Amy Shay as they purchased McDonald's and are excited about the changes they'll make there. By spring next year, we'll see the new McCafe facade, and lots of work is being done, ongoing. The grand opening of the new Dodge dealership took place. Congratulations to Jeff Little and his team. Winners is advertising for jobs, and their store should be in place by the end of August. Giant Tiger's up and running, and a new department store, Rossi's, will go into the mall as well. We've all noticed the signs that FreshCo has put up around town, indicating where work will be ongoing, and new businesses will be set up. It creates excitement, but even more important, it speaks loudly to the fact that Yarmouth truly is open for business. To further encourage the openness, our planner Caroline King and MMM Group, together with councillors and planning advisory members, took to the streets on the weekend and encouraged dialogue with regard to the municipal planning strategy. It was exciting, engaging, many people took part, and some great ideas have been put forward. The paving plants are now open, I feel like I'm in one of those bubbles where you're going to hear that, woo, because that's exciting, and work is progressing nicely with the potholes and more. Continued patience, patience is encouraged as the teams work hard to clean a big mess that was left from the winter. If you haven't wandered down to Hawthorne Street, we hope you will. The project is finished, and it looks amazing. The facade program is getting more buy-in weekly, and we're starting to see some very bright welcome changes on Main Street. If you haven't picked up a copy of Progress Magazine, now's the time to do so. Yarmouth has a sixteen-page spread celebrating who we are. This magazine goes throughout the Atlantic provinces into the rest of Canada, and can be found as far away as Brazil, is truly something to celebrate. The All Hands on Deck initiatives continue to be worked on, in the next couple weeks, meetings will be held to put together a splash park committee and a murals team. While representatives of the town will be available to answer questions regarding bylaws and logistics, these are ultimately community-led initiatives, and you'll be updated shortly. Housing continues to be an issue here in Yarmouth, an area, and it's important to advise everyone that work is ongoing, and moving forward with a number of initiatives to take care of what is a desperate situation for many. Add to that homelessness that we can't always see, but it surely exists, and many other issues that leave some of our citizens without, and it's very important that we're both aware of the situations and working towards solutions, and we continue to do that with our partners. It's going to be a tremendously busy summer. Thank you all for being part of moving us forward. Let's enjoy the visitors who are excited about our town, enjoy everything that we're surrounded by here. That's it. You had a question, councillor Langel?
Yes, your worship, very exciting about the number of businesses coming to Yarmouth, and a merchant asked me a very interesting question, a very interesting point. We have these businesses coming into our community, they are investing in our community, they are putting a fair amount of capital, they're giving jobs, and his comment was, the first thing they get from the town of Yarmouth is the tax bill. Do we give, have we ever given consideration to even do like a welcome letter or something to businesses coming into the community? I, I know we have an economic development officer now, because I really think it's something we should explore to go one step further than a tax bill, but I'm just kind of wondering what, if, if his observation was correct or not.
So, so, okay, our economic development does visit before they even open, I always visit before they open, and, and welcome, just do an informal welcome. Do you need anything, those, those pieces? Go ahead, CAO.
Thank you, worship. So, our economic development officer has met with, with many of the, many of the businesses that, that her worship spoke of, before they did their job fairs, before they advertised their jobs, to assist them in, in understanding where, where some of the opportunities were to recruit within our community, to help them understand that the town is, is welcoming and supportive, and that she's there to help them to navigate, you know, the, the rules of the town, so whether it's for signage, or for, for development permits, so on, to help them in that, in that process. Beyond that, it is, it is incorrect to say that the first thing a business gets is the tax bill. We send out tax bills twice a year on a schedule. If you, you know, set up your business on the day before the tax bills come out, well then perhaps that's true, but that's by chance alone. Tax bills go out on a regular schedule, and everybody pays taxes. We certainly do try, it, it is part of our brand and part of our, our goals to, to show that we're open, welcoming, and having an economic development officer who can, who can extend a, a warm, friendly hand from the town, and, and help introduce them to all the town has to offer, I think is, is a, a big plus for us.
Councillor Dawes?
Thank you, your worship. My first thought when, when I, when I heard councillor Langel bring, bring that up was Facebook. Every, I think the only, the only souls in this town that are not on Facebook are the unborn, it seems sometimes, and we always know, I always know, when there is a new business in town, where it is located, who owns it, there are pictures, the new business owner is, is personally welcomed, everyone knows when there is a new business in town. That was just my first thought when I heard about it, that was Facebook, it's there.
And that's, that's why I post.
Thank you.
Everything, not, because people need to know what's coming, and, and that it's actually here. Go ahead, councillor.
Yeah, and where I'm going with this is, is that I think it would be a nice idea, just something to throw it out as an. something to throw it out as an idea, that maybe once a year, that we actually host something here at Town Hall for those new businesses and for the merchants, or, you know, when they are in here, because a lot of these individuals are coming here, and I'm not just referring to retail, I'm talking doctors, I'm talking professionals, to host them here at Town Hall and open it to members of the business community or the Chamber of Commerce, or maybe doing it in conjunction with the Chamber of Commerce, just to welcome them to our community and acknowledge who they are, and gives them a chance to know who they are. And that's kind of what I was kinda leading into, so just plant that little germ in the economic developers, development officers' agenda. Thank you.
Good. Okay, additions, or questions for committee chairs, sorry. Any questions for committee chairs? Additions, capital budget. Did you add that one? So, C A O?
Thank you, worship. So, under the committee of the hall motions earlier this evening, there was one around the Canada 150 infrastructure program that was announced, and the direction that was given at the committee of the hall was that we go back into our capital budget and see if there was anything there that fit. Now, last Friday, there was a meeting, I believe in Ergile, about the Canada 150 infrastructure program, and I don't know if.
I think I got, Bill got part of it.
Maybe if you could share some of the information about the program, and maybe we can determine from that whether there's anything on this list that fits the criteria, or if there's anything else council has thought of that you would like staff to pursue an application for.
So, did we receive, did we all receive notes from that? Natalie took notes at that meeting?
Yeah.
And, so she would have, I know that she took notes and she was going to get them out. My take was that we're not going to do a park or buy a truck or something like that and call it the legacy project. It has to be connected to history, heritage, you know, all those pieces. That was my thought, but councillor.
Yeah, and I think you're right, and the amount of money that's discussed is, what, $16 million in Atlantic Canada, which, once you break that up, is not that much money. And the only thing I see in the capital budget plan that might fit that criteria is almost the walkway around the cotton mill or the Vancouver Street Bridge, kind of, the waterfront development had a plan here three or four years ago for the redevelopment of that, and I think that fits in about the budget, if you put those two together, but I don't think there's gonna be that much money, so any of the other ones, any of the sewer water treatment things, like traffic lights, any of those things, I don't think will fit under that program of what they're looking for. I think they want something that they actually put up a Canada Action Plan sign and get some leverage out of it, more photo opportunities than anything, but I think the only thing that we have is that probably that waterfront park, walkway, Vancouver Street Bridge area.
Somebody else has something, no?
And, yeah, but one of our other municipal partners has something with us, might be an opportunity for you to have that discussion with, and Jeff to have that discussion with Ken and Murray or Aldrick, they might have something that we can all benefit and partner with.
Councillor Langel?
Councillor Mooney's quite right, the amount of dollars there, basically, in this one, I would suggest miniscule, you're probably looking at most $2,000 or $3,000 if we're lucky, by the time you divide up all the units and per capita. And just to bring to council's attention, and I, again, I wasn't here for the discussion, but historically, Yarmouth did have a very strong Confederation connection through Joseph Howe, who did have a lot of dealings in this area, I understand from individuals, and also we had some other players that were backroom in many cases in the pro-Confederation movement. What I'm getting at, it would be nice to have a nice interpretive panel even built down near Coronation Park, near the Herbert Huntington House, who was also a figure at the time, I believe, I can be corrected. Even that, I mean, an interpretive panel, we all know, was like $2,000, $3,000, but if we looked at a panel that would show our involvement with Confederation, I think that would be probably a winner, so, because I don't think we're gonna get a heck of a lot of money, as councillor Mooney says, I mean, by the time you get the cities, Halifax and St. John's and St. John's and Fredericton and Charlottetown, and, you know, you start dividing up that change, and then you get all the little towns that are gonna be scraping for it, we'll be, you know, we'll probably get around the $4,000 or $5,000 range, maybe more, I don't know, C A O can, he knows more than I on that, so I was just gonna throw that out as a suggestion too, to look at.
Okay, so, you got that written down? Yeah, yeah, okay, good. So can we, we don't have to make a motion now, right? Because we can all be thinking about what else there is, and I will have a chat with our municipal partners, just to see if there's something we can all benefit from. Go ahead.
Thank you, your worship. So this, I'm going to, through you two, to the C A O, please. This is the list to which you all made reference at the last committee of the hall meeting, because I did watch the stream, some of it.
This was the list that was requested in the motion, so we weren't looking at this at the last meeting.
Oh, okay.
It was, so it was suggested that maybe we should look at it, so I was providing it tonight so that you could look at it, but.
I'll look.
Okay, so you could look at it, and, you know, so her worship is gonna talk to our municipal partners, and we've got the idea of the panel, looking at Confederation and connections to Yarmouth.
I'm putting two wrong ends together with this. Thank you.
Good. Okay, councillor Dennis?
I'm just wondering, our towns are built on the lobster industry, and yet, for the fishermen, we don't really have anything that shows that in our town, so I was just wondering about, like, if we had something on the waterfront, like a large lobster, or something to show off how we got to become what we are. And we're still a fishing town, and we still depend on the lobster fishing industry here, but yet we don't have anything that represents them.
Yeah, so that would almost be doable as long as the history comes into it.
Well, that's pretty historic.
Yeah, it is, because it wouldn't be just putting up, it would be putting up the story like councillor Langel was saying, the, what do you call it, the plaque, the panel.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, cut that down? Good? Okay?
I hate to, just to, maybe just to put a little historic history here, again, this is legacy for 1867, and the lobster industry really didn't begin until around 1900. In fact, the guy who owned my house started the lobster industry. The Yarmouth in 1867 was making its dollars in salt fish, which we were exporting to the Caribbean back and forth, and we'd been doing that for about 40, 50 years prior to Confederation, and we were, that was basically our mainstay, was salt fish. So I just wanted to clarify that, because if we're gonna go for a legacy project and they want 1867, historically, we're about 40 years off there, so just to be a little cautious there. I don't know what you're gonna do for a monument for salt fish, though, but, but it's a great idea, I really think we should have some lobster presence somewhere, because it's our major thing, yeah, so. Sweeney Museum, thank you very much, C A O.
Good. Councillor Dawes?
Thank you, your worship. There's been a lot of talk about a monument to, in honor of our lobster heritage, our lobster fishing heritage, and the question is, should it be one great big lobster fisherman? Should it be a lobster fisherman hauling out a lobster, out of a lobster trap? Should it be one huge lobster trap? So there, that's ongoing on what people's vision is of this, not fountain, what is the word I'm thinking of? Statue, statue to commemorate, to commemorate the town's heritage. Thank you.
Good?
Okay, then instead of the lobster, it could be just a fisherman with a lobster and maybe a fish in a net.
And sometimes, honestly councillor Dennis, sometimes you just start to tell the history, and the statue ends up being the lobster, right? Because it's part of where it started and where it ends up, so it's a great idea. Okay, so we'll just keep thinking about, we'll keep thinking on that one. Okay, C A O? Good? Seafood and Wine Extravaganza Presentation Request.
Your worship, I read this over, and I'd like to make a motion that we defer this to the committee of the hall, and invite Carol Hill, if she'd like to come at that time, to address it, because I know there's some other factors in fundraising that could change, so, it'll be my motion, just defer it to the committee of the hall.
Okay, good. Are we okay, do we need to vote on that, to defer?
Well, we should be voting to invite.
Okay.
Sir.
Okay, moved and seconded to invite.
What?
Any discussion?
Questions?
Questions been called? All those in favor? Contrary? Motion carried. Planners Conference, councillor Dawes?
Thank you, your worship. The 2015 Nova Scotia Planner and Directors Association's annual spring conference took place again in Halifax between May 27 and 29. This organized, this association, this conference, it's early, it's an early evening, this conference was co-organized by our town planner Caroline King, by the way, so kudos to Caroline, and although she will be reporting further in her monthly report to council at the committee of the hall, I'm going to quickly share the conference from my perspective as both a councillor and a P A C member. This year's theme was Planning for One Nova Scotia, engaging all participants on how we can best move Nova Scotia forward to a more prosperous future, heeding Ray Iveney's recommendations of his Now or Never Report. Topics and themes included climate change in municipalities, attracting and retaining newcomers to Nova Scotia, encouraging better design and development in our municipalities, community and economic development, and the most encouraging panel discussion that was entitled Removing Obstacles. This panel consisted of four municipal planners from different areas, each acknowledging and sharing their views and ways of working with residents and developers, and softening the rigidity of dealing with planning offices all across the province, becoming user-friendly, so to speak, and although I had my favorites, this was the most forward-thinking and encouraging conference presentations for a long time, certainly of those few planning conferences that I have attended. Speaking with and listening to other councillors, P A C members, and various planners, I left there with a lot of notes, new connections, and some great ideas, but the most fascinating was that Yarmouth is a forerunner in many sectors, especially the fact that we are leading all municipalities in changing our M P S and L U B, our... I should tell you what M P S stands for. Municipal Planning Strategy and the Land Use Bylaw. We are the first to take on changing that, so. Of all the good things that I did learn and listen there, that made me feel very, very good and proud to be from Yarmouth. Thank you.
Thank you. Those planning conferences are excellent, they're all excellent. Additions, we're done additions, approval of invoices? Date of next meeting?
Second.
Okay. Approval, oh, approval of invoices. Moved and seconded, discussion?
Questions?
Questions been called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. I have to sneak this in, Mayor's Walk for the Walk and Wheel Fest tomorrow at noon, we're just gonna, we're gonna meet, and the Lucy Jarvis opening at the Art Gallery tomorrow night at 6:00, so there's lots going on, and we have in camera one?
Good.
Okay.
Will you now?
Good, yes. This one. We'll be out in record time.
Do you want to take it, Eric?
Yes, thank you.